Special meeting of the Glendale City Council for November 5, 2013. Calling order 314 PM. Real call, please.
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Giarion.
Here.
Wintero.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. May we have you report?
The agenda for the November 5, 2013 special public meeting of the city council was posted on Thursday, October 31, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. And item one is a public hearing. Proposed Carmel Partners five-story North Central Avenue Apartments project to be located at Site A, which is 607 to 633 North Central Avenue, 317 to 321 West Doran Street, and 314 to 324 Pioneer Drive, 315 units. And Site B, 526 to 540 North Central Avenue, 200 to 214 West Doran Street, and 527 to 531 North Orange Street, 192 units, excuse me. And at 1A is a resolution certifying the environmental impact report. 1B is motion approving Stage Two design for Site A, subject to comments and conditions of approval. 1C is motion approving Stage Two design for Site B, subject to comments and conditions of approval. 1D is a resolution approving general plan amendment. 1E is ordinance for introduction amending the zoning map. 1F is ordinance for introduction amending downtown specific plan maps. 1G, ordinance for introduction approving a development agreement. 1H, motion approving standard variances for Site A. And finally, at 1I, motion approving standard variances for Site B.
Let's see. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing now, so I don't forget. And little housekeeping, other than the ordinances for introduction, can all the remainder be done in one motion, or is there a sequence?
No, they can be taken in altogether, if that's the council's desire.
Okay. Mr. Ochoa.
If I could, before Mr. Ochoa and the staff begins the presentation, I just want to follow up on an item that arose at the last hearing on this, on the Stage One, and that was with respect to Councilmember Sananian's office lease that is within 500 feet. At the time...
I wasn't around at Stage One, so we had another project which...
Oh, okay, you're right. But I think because it was similar, it was a similar factual scenario, I just want to raise the issue and make sure it's addressed on the record prior to the commencement of the hearing. He does have an office lease within 500 feet. There are certain factors when you have a lease that address whether there's a conflict. All the criteria indicated there would not be a conflict, except for the provision that said if there's a likelihood or possibility that the project will increase their right to sublease their leased space, then that could create a conflict. Since that time, Councilmember Sananian has revised his lease to state that he will not receive any additional income as a result of any sublease, that any additional sublease revenue that he'd be entitled to would go to the landlord. And based on that, that sort of knocks out that last particular prong of the FPPC regulation. And as a result, I've looked at it, and it's the conclusion of our office that he can't participate in this matter if he so desires.
Too bad.
He can participate.
No, too bad you can't make money on some lease. What'd you think, Sananian? Okay with that, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. This is a complex project that we are bringing before you, complex in the size and scope by way, and as defined by the approvals that the project is seeking in this hearing today, complex in that it straddles a couple of streets, and complex in that it straddles the downtown specific plan area. We have a number of presentations to make that really articulate that degree of complexity, but I think synthesizes it in such a way that it is within the spirit and intent of the downtown specific plan. Indeed, as you look at the life and depth of various buildings and neighborhoods throughout the United States, California, Glendale, you see that buildings reach their economic obsolescence and then are redeveloped. And in a downtown environment, if left to their own devices, they will flow naturally just to whatever the market so dictates. In Glendale's case, however, while we have a healthy respect for that market, we also have a very aggressive, very defined downtown specific plan that's based on the council's vision that gives both the market, as well as the community, the balance in looking at what is best in the long-term interests of the community. And so I think what you have before you, and you will hopefully be able to ask questions about and add additional elements of your own vision and flair to this design review hearing, is a look at the project overview, the EIR, the various land use entitlements and development agreement that will go along with this project. And we will present that first as a staff, and then allow the project development team to make their case to you. So with that, I'll have our senior project manager, Mike Fortney, walk you through the first part of this presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Good afternoon, Mayor Weaver and city council members. Again, I'm Mike Fortney, Senior Housing Project Manager, Community Development Department, Housing Division. So the proposed project before you this afternoon is the North Central Avenue Apartments project. It is a 507-unit market-rate rental housing development. Can I address this, or do I need to? Apparently I can't.
Maybe the batteries are bad. Maybe it wasn't turned on.
Oh. Sorry. Issue. Oh, sorry, Senator.
Yeah, there we go.
Great. So we would like to do the presentation. First, I want to introduce the proposed project, orient you to the site, and then ask Alan Loomis to come up and review the design elements of the project. And then Carmel Partners will make a presentation. And following that, Meridian Consultants is here to discuss the EIR. They also have a short presentation. And then I'll come back again just to list the staff recommendations, the actions that were read to you before. And then, of course, at the end, if you would, staff, developer consultants, we're all here to answer any questions, comments, concerns.
It's probably worth stating at this point that the second item on our agenda today is really conditioned upon the first, the conditional vacation of alleyways contained within the project site.
Okay, so the project is broken into two sites, Site A and Site B. Site A is on the west side of Central Avenue. It is bounded on the north by Pioneer Drive, to the south by Doran Street, and to the west by the Doran Gardens Affordable Housing Project, the Doran Gardens Mini Park, and a small multifamily rental development. You can see the picture is a little dated. Doran Gardens, the project and the park are both constructed now. Site B is on the east side of Central Avenue. It's bounded to the north by Pioneer Drive, bounded to the south by an office building and a parking structure, and to the east by Orange. So currently on the site, Site A, you have a surface parking lot on the northwest corner. You have a medical office building on the northeast corner, as well as the southeast corner, and then surface parking in between. And then you also have a multifamily development project with surface parking on the southwest corner. On Site B, you have a medical office building and surface parking. All of the development that's currently on Site A and B would be demolished if this proposal is approved. So talk a little bit more about what is being proposed. On Site A, you have 315 units, and these units are wrapped around a 456-space parking structure that is above ground. It's a five-story building. And on Site B, you also have a five-story apartment building with 192 units. And again, it's wrapped around an above-ground parking structure. And that's really... I'm going to stop there, and I'm going to ask Alan Loomis to come up and talk about the design.
Mike? To just take a quick overview of the project, we'll look at this aerial perspective. Site B is in the foreground, Site A is in sort of middle ground. You can see Duran Gardens peeking up in the upper left. One of the characteristics of this project being that the parking structure is above grade with a five-story apartment building wrapped around it, so it means that with the exception of the rooftop pool decks, which are on top of the parking structure, all of the common open space is actually at grade and in actual dirt, as opposed to many of the other projects that we've seen in the downtown where the common deck or pool deck is actually elevated one floor above grade and on a concrete surface with parking or retail located underneath it. In this case, the common open space is actually real gardens and real dirt. So it's really an interesting change.
So what you're saying is if you live on like the third floor, you'll come into the parking structure and wind up to the third floor? In other words, you park on the same level as your...
Yeah, correct. And an optimum sort of leasing scenario, you'd be given, if you lived on the third floor, your parking space would be assigned to you on the third floor, so you also wouldn't have to go through an elevator from the basement up to the fourth floor.
When you go to the market, you have to carry bags now. Shorter walk.
Right. You wouldn't have to use an elevator or stairs. So there's also some convenience factor for the residents. I want to address some of the comments that came up at the planning commission hearing. They had offered three comments when they reviewed the proposed zone change and general plan amendment, which affects Site A only. Site B is entirely within the boundaries anticipated by the downtown specific plan. It's actually significantly under the maximum allowed zoning envelope that Site B would allow. Site A does include a zone change and general plan amendment to expand the boundaries of the downtown specific plan. And the planning commission offered three comments. One of them was a request to look at, reevaluate the traffic ingress and egress points into the two projects, without offering any specifics as to what they would recommend. They just said to reevaluate those. And as you can see, as Mike mentioned, the dark gray squares represent the two parking structures for both buildings. And on Site B, we have one driveway that exits. Site A actually has two driveways that exit out of those parking structures. On Site A, the main driveway actually exits out onto Central, whereas the other two driveways on Site A and Site B, they exit onto the cross streets, the east-west cross streets. What's important, however, is that the primary entrance into Site A that comes out onto Central comes to a controlled traffic intersection with an actual traffic light that exists today. And the two other cross streets, the two other exits that come out on the cross street also would exit, those cross streets come out to controlled traffic intersection points. So if there was any other location for the driveways, they would be coming out probably either onto uncontrolled intersections, which would limit the amount of movement, and backing up, that would occur if we're exiting out onto Central. Or on Site A, any alternative exit point would probably push traffic into the adjoining neighborhood to the west.
Do you know, the main one exit onto Central, will that be, you're coming out, a trigger device will trigger the signal and change, because otherwise the flow north and south would continue. I mean, you wouldn't need that ease. Well, no, if you're coming west, you'd need it occasionally. I guess you can forget my comment.
My understanding is that that intersection just runs, or that light runs on a regular cycle, so I'm not sure necessarily it's the trigger.
I forgot about the east coming west.
And there is adequate backup, as you can see on Site A, there would be adequate backup so somebody could go through the light before they need to trigger the gate to get into the parking structure. So we wouldn't have a backup. Traffic has evaluated that for us. The other consideration that Planning Commission raised related to providing an east-west connection through Site A for pedestrian purposes. And consideration for that in the downtown specific plan is generated, or kind of guided by this diagram on the open space network, and have enlarged here the portion that deals with Site A and Site B. Site B, the downtown specific plan requests an east-west pedestrian passage at the south edge of the site, whereas on Site A, the downtown specific plan requests a north-south pedestrian passage. And when we look at the landscape design that's been provided by the architecture team, we see that Site B provides that east-west passage to the south of the site. That's this one right here. That actually also forms a nice landscape buffer for the units that would be looking at the parking structure and office building directly south. And Site A has a north-south passage, which is part of the realignment and vacation of the alley to turn that into pedestrian passage that sort of fulfills that requested downtown specific plan. This also led to a really exciting opportunity from a design standpoint, which is that that north-south passage, we basically expanded, and it's almost 50 feet wide at this point from the property line to the edges of the building, and that became the public open space of the project, which then became an extension of the existing Duran Gardens Mini Park. And it's approximately almost 50% addition to the original Duran Gardens Mini Park. So all this dark green is now going under the proposed project would be public space as an extension of the existing park. This also set up in the motion a series of other decisions to take the common open space, which as I mentioned is located at grade, and locate that on the west side of Site A. So you can see in the light green, we have two courtyards at the at grade. These would be private courtyards to building residents. But that basically begins to break the scale of the building down on the west side, where it's particularly sensitive because it faces an existing residential neighborhood. So we break the scale of the building down with gardens and open space. And while there isn't a public passageway east-west through the building, there is a private passageway that goes, as you can see here, from Central through the central courtyard at grade and then connects to Duran Gardens Mini Park. That would be, again, common to building residents in Site A that does allow them to move as pedestrians from this grade, from sidewalk at Central, deep into the neighborhood. And that actually echoes the existing pattern of courtyards and walkways in the original Duran Gardens Affordable Project, which you'll recall are also private to the building residents. So it's sort of a sequence of a series of different courtyards and public open spaces, private and common, that sort of links all the two projects together. As a result of those series of decisions to try and put as much of the open space on the west side of the project as possible, and the west side of the site is a buffer to the existing neighborhood in Duran Gardens, and to expand Duran Gardens Mini Park, as a consequence, the parking structure and a good deal of the building's mass ended up on Central. And in regards to articulating that mass, which is another comment from Planning Commission, we referenced this drawing in the downtown specific plan. Here's the site right here. And this acknowledges that Duran Street, as it comes onto Central, would actually end on the elevation of this new building. And so the specific plan calls for some sort of articulation or tower-like element to sort of acknowledge that terminus, to articulate the elevation. And so when we're looking, this is basically as you're driving on brand towards the site, so you're going westbound on Duran, this is the way that facade has been articulated. The very top element here is actually part of the roof deck for the pool, so the pool roof deck actually has this, enjoys this view, eastward down Duran Street towards brand, and the tower is the elevator tower, allow building residents to get up and down the building. And if we look at that from this aerial perspective we saw at the beginning, again, here's this articulation midpoint of the central facade, divides the central facade into half with this kind of articulated, kind of almost civic-like elements. It engages the pool deck on the roof, divides this facade into two different elements that are utilizing different materials, different colors, different finishes, in effect to try and appear as almost as if they're two separate buildings, although they're somewhat similar in size. So we feel that with respect to the Planning Commission, that their concerns have been addressed in the design, and that in many ways, that's also part of a consequence of some of the limitations of what we can do at Central are a result of trying to maximize the value we can to Duran Gardens and minimize the impacts that this structure would have to the adjacent residential neighborhood to the west. With that, to discuss the design in greater detail, I'd like to turn the podium over to the development team, and I believe Carmel Partners and their architect will discuss all the intricate details of the two projects.
Just to hand for the record.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Neil Scott, and I'm thrilled to be in front of you today to present our project on behalf of Carmel Partners. For those of you that don't know Carmel Partners, I believe it's one of the highest-quality developers in California with very unique capabilities, such as in-house construction, in-house operations, and we actually self-manage our projects. And finally, in-house equity, so we fund our projects. We are long-term holders of real estate in residential projects, and we apply this long-term philosophy to our developments with a true focus on quality and being in harmony with the local community. The project we present to you today is one that we spent a tremendous amount of time working together on with the help of city staff and what I believe is an all-star consultant team. And they are also here today to present the project to you. I believe that the outcome of our collective work is a truly fantastic project, which I'm very proud of. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank the city staff for their thoughtful feedback throughout the past several months. They provided great ideas, great suggestions, and their feedback has been critical in improving our project and hopefully making it right for the community. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce Rodney Khan, who can take you through the further details of the project. Thank you very much. Thanks for your consideration.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are located here in the city of Glendale. Seven months ago, we presented our project to you for Stage One. We showed you our conceptual design, and we received your approval. For the past several months, we've been working with your staff, we've been meeting with community members, with adjacent property owners, and enhancing and improving the design of our projects, based on comments and feedback that we received at these meetings. What I'd like to do is take a brief moment and talk about the context of our site. I know that staff has already presented what is on our site. I would like to talk a little bit about what surrounds our site, and then talk a little bit about the entitlements that we are requesting and why we're requesting them. As shown in the top right corner of this slide is the 134 freeway. Both Site A and Site B are a few hundred feet away from the 134 freeway. Directly north of Site A is the tallest building in the city of Glendale, and that's the 25-story Unum Building. Directly west of that is a six-story parking structure, which you can see in the image right beneath it. And west of that is the tallest residential building in the city of Glendale, which is the 18-story Park Towers, two towers that are located directly south of the freeway. South of Site A, we have a fast food restaurant and parking lot. To the east, you see Site B, and what is currently under construction is the Nexus Project, multifamily apartment project that's under construction. As mentioned by staff, directly west is the Duran Gardens Park, along with multifamily apartment buildings. This describes further the heights of the buildings that surround our sites. For instance, on Site B, we have a six-story building, a five-story parking structure, and to the south is a nine-story office building. What this image displays is that Site A properties, and you could see in the outline around our project site, we actually have the same family owns all of these properties for Site A and Site B. The use of the property is predominantly used by the medical offices and the parking for the medical offices. There is a small component or component that shows residential apartments. When the downtown specific plan was created, it took this property that was under the same family ownership and it split it. It split it down the middle, with the east side going into the downtown specific plan, and the west side going into high-density residential with a parking structure overlay. What we are proposing to do is to consolidate Site A, design a cohesive project. We are asking for the entire property to be in the same zone and have the same development standards. Thus, the request for the general plan amendment and the zone change. One of the most important components of the project has already been talked about, or at least identified, and you'll hear our team talk about it even further in more specifics and more details. And that is the expansion of the Duran Gardens Park. Actually, the square footage that it's expanding is approximately 11,000 square feet of public open space, and it increases or enhances the size of the park by 70%, not 50%, 70%. We concentrated our public open space for this area because, as staff pointed out, it's the maximum usage, and it expands a much-needed necessity, which is park space in the downtown area. I went back and I watched the Stage One public hearing before this presentation, our team did. And we listened to questions and comments that the city council had, that the community had, and the staff had identified in their staff report. And our project team will be addressing many of these throughout our presentation. One of the comments made to us at the last hearing was to work with Heritage Partners, the folks that developed this site here, the Duran Gardens Park and the Duran Gardens Project. We held a community meeting with them to get their input and feedback regarding the project design and the expansion of the park. And we incorporated their comments into the park, the way it is used, the way it operates, and also the project itself, by stepping it down, by creating more privacy and being sensitive to what their needs are. And we have members from that organization here to speak today as well. Another important component that was brought up or mentioned at the last hearing, and I want to be very clear and specific with this, I know it's important to all of you on the city council, but Councilman Quintero had brought it up, and that is that the residential tenants that are in the existing apartment building be treated with respect and with dignity and be fairly compensated. And that is exactly what Carmel Partners is doing. We hired a relocation specialist to assist all the residents with their relocation needs. We are offering financial assistance which exceeds requirements, and we will continue to work with the residents to discuss relocation alternatives. This is Carmel Partners doing what is right, and they are taking this responsibility very seriously. Finally, the last part of my presentation, and I mentioned to you before at the last hearing, we know that this site is very important. It is a gateway to our city. We know that in terms of a design of a project, that it requires, it demands, a high-quality landmark design, which is exactly what we are providing here today. I'll conclude my remarks, and I'll invite our architect up to walk you through the design of the project. Thank you.
Next. Name for the record? Tobin?
Tobin Semien with Architects Orange. How are you doing? Thank you for allowing us to present this project to you today. As the context, as Rodian mentioned, very close to the freeway 134 have the two buildings as we see here. And I'm just going to go into a little bit more detail for each of those. So on Site A, we have located the leasing fitness location at the corner of Pioneer and North Central. And those are two-story volumes, so that from a street level, it has a commercial feel. There will be the commercial storefront construction for those. And so that in also light of a deeper landscape setback off of North Central for the majority of the residential units there, provides a more residential or pedestrian-friendly atmosphere for walkability along that edge. We were asked to provide an additional access out from the building to the south, and so we've added a southern street access that hits onto the southern part of Duran there. That's in addition to an additional access from the courtyard through to North Central. We were asked also to provide zip car locations for both buildings. This building A provides three spaces for a zip car. We do have long-term bicycle parking locations. 79 are located within the parking structure and is a lockable, is a locked gate gated area. Additionally, we have short-term bicycle parking locations around the site, as you see. We have the private open space that was mentioned previously with an internal courtyard here, and then two external courtyards on the west side. Additionally, for private open space, we have the rooftop pool deck over the garage. The public open space, as was mentioned before, that ties into the, and actually becomes an expansion of the Duran Gardens Mini Park along the western edge. So here's the rendering of the corner of Pioneer, excuse me, Pioneer on this edge and North Central. As I mentioned, we have a storefront view here that contains fitness at the corner, leasing here, and then your main entry that aligns with Duran. And all of that, plus the landscape setback that I mentioned, that's deeper in this area of the residential, does provide more of a pedestrian scale for the building along that edge. Here is, as I mentioned, the terminus and provides a landmark architectural feature as you're heading west on Duran, ending up into the garage here. You have a glass-back elevator. We have taken this top piece and kind of created a frame around, and it was mentioned by staff that there needs to be an actual deck area that is viewable, and so all of that we have incorporated. We can see in these two slides, once again, an enhanced or enlarged view of this. There you can kind of see through the glass the deck areas that overlook Duran. And here from the backside, you can see from the rooftop deck, those two lower decks here, that view. Of course, anyone that's on top of the deck will also be viewing through that frame, looking down Duran. So it creates a nice, it's the terminus on one side and actually a viewport on the other. Here again, seeing from above, this is Duran here into the terminus, the roof deck here. And again, if you're by the pool, you're seeing the view down Duran through that frame. This is at the corner of North Central. We're just walking around the building. This is North Central and Duran on the south side. This is the secondary access that I mentioned on the south side. And also from this view, you can also see how we have, in accordance with the DSP, have stepped the building down from six stories to five, and then we'll see here also then to four stories along the western edge. This view here takes a lot into consideration when we start looking at the Duran Gardens, the extension of the Duran Gardens Mini Park into our property. And it also shows very well an access that not only do we have from a walkability standpoint along through our site into the Paseo, but also, it also incorporates a walkability Paseo linkage to the building B, Paseo on the south side. So whereas Duran stops here into North Central, then walkability-wise, we have the Paseo being there and going all the way to Orange. Architecturally, we have treated the units that face the garden very differently than the rest of the building. The rest of the building, especially along Duran and also North Central, is more of a commercial, larger blocks here for a more residential feel. We actually have stoops on the lower level, and then we articulated the residential units that face it differently in terms of material and color. Stage One showed where we had five stories along this whole edge, and now with Stage Two, how we have dropped that to four stories on the western edge. Here's another view that looks down through the Paseo and shows a little bit in greater detail how we have extended the Mini Park into our project, and you can see down toward Pioneer in this area. Also, it shows even better view of how we have articulated the step-down from five-story to four-story along the western edge. Again, Stage One, where we had five stories all in this area, and how we have dropped it down to four, really makes quite a dramatic difference in being able to let light in. One thing also that I should mention is, we had some windows that were facing on the west side. We've turned those inward and now have simple, small lights that are high windows along that edge, so that from a privacy standpoint for those who are in Duran Gardens, we've wanted to be sensitive to those issues. Building B, on the other side of Central, on the east side, once again, the leasing fitness location at the corner of Duran and North Central, whereas, remember, the Fitness and Leasing Center was on this side. So as you're moving down in your vehicle along North Central, you see both the commercial feel on both of these edges, because this will be the main travel from the 134. Zip car locations, they're a smaller building. This requires two zip cars, which we have provided for. Long-term bicycle location, short-term bicycle locations, again, on the exterior. The private open space, internal courtyard here, and also then, once again, we have a rooftop deck for this building as well. The public open space, as I mentioned previously in that one rendering we saw in looking down at the terminus of this portion of Duran, continues on with a walking street and a Going around the building, this is again at the corner of Duran and North Central this way of Building B, again, showing a two-story volume, commercial type of construction. And also wanted to mention that we were asked to make sure that in terms of breaking up this building, that the massing was, instead of having one five-story piece, to break it into smaller pieces, and this is a horizontal way of treatment of taking two-story volumes, separating it down from a three-story, if you will, volume above. As we walk to the left around this building, we're now at Duran and Orange. See the articulation there again, and Orange and the edge of the Paseo as it ends up onto And again, at the other side of the Paseo, and now on North Central. We've taken into mind also the considerations for providing not only different colors but also materials. Both Building A and Building B have a variety of materials that we're using, not just stucco. We are using Trespa panels, metal siding, corrugated metal, a variety, so that one use and one color isn't going to be seen. In providing, of course, the variety, we're providing much more pleasant aesthetics for this building. And now again, we are here at the terminus of the southern Duran, and again, we see how that fits in with the walkability and the Paseo that Building B has along the southern Rooftop deck, again, for Building B, and you can see Building A in the background and the frame there. So both buildings will have this rooftop amenity for the pleasure of all the resins. And that is the conclusion of my portion of the project, and now will be the landscape architect to cover a little bit more.
Thank you. Name for the record?
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Baker. I'm a principal with Melendrez. The difficulty of going last is to come up with anything original to say, but I will try to come up with something, an interesting way to sort of look at this, because we think this is a very powerful project. Successful projects have low vacancies. They lease all their units. Great projects, we believe, change the neighborhoods that they're in. They really have a transformative impact, and we feel that the sum of this project in terms of its building and its landscape really has an impact on this area of Glendale, and I want to demonstrate that through really five key points. The first, I'll go back to this slide, the first is the idea of it really making up the gateway that Rodney talked about. We have the ability here to affect five major streets in this part of downtown, and the ability to add a street tree canopy to build the urban forest inventory within Glendale, which is an important asset, and the idea of creating high-quality public realm. So what I mean by high-quality public realm, I'm talking about quality canopy trees, talking about 10-foot wide sidewalks that are punctuated by either planted tree pits or linear parkways that protect the pedestrian. We have landscape setbacks at all of the residential entries all the way around, and the only place that that landscape setback is removed is in front of retail for obvious reasons. We have short-term bike parking. On Parcel A, we have parking at the park, which I'll come back to in a moment. We have parking at the North Central Avenue entry, and also parking at the Pioneer entry as well. On Site B, we have bike parking on the Paseo, which I'll talk about a little bit further, and also over here on North Orange. And then finally, to go back to Site A for a moment, we also are taking the importance of public transportation and creating a shaded seating area for bus patrons along North Central as well, within the landscape setback area. The second piece of this is this collection of resident amenity spaces, the private amenity spaces within the project. It's already been touched upon that two of those spaces front immediately onto public open space and are immediately visible, evident, and connected to the public open space. The third space, while not physically connected, is visually connected to the street, so it becomes part of the view shed and part of the borrowed landscape. And then in Block B, it sits immediately off one of the key entry points into the project. The importance of these spaces, while private, is about giving the residents of these buildings something that is important to them, something that becomes beloved to them. We know that as residents become attached to their home, to the amenities that come with their home, there's a certain pride that comes with it. They begin to spend more money in their neighborhood, they begin to celebrate their neighborhood, and they embrace the businesses and the other residents that are within the neighborhood. So this is about creating high-quality assets that become a sense of pride for the residents and a sense of pride for Glendale as well. So we're looking at courtyards that, as we're touched on before, are all at ground level, so the landscape has the opportunity to mature, to become large, to become permanent, large shade trees, robust planting areas, and the idea of creating small seating areas, larger gathering spaces, a wide variety of spaces that really become kind of the social hubs for what is, in essence, building a new neighborhood.
The previous slide, about how many, how big is that area?
That area there? Big, that courtyard?
Square footage, or half acre, quarter acre? I'm trying to put in perspective to like the Americana open space.
Right.
Quarter that size, a half that size. Sorry, I thought everybody had that at the fingertips. You know?
Yeah, we may have to come back to the numbers.
Two and a half acres?
Including the Paseos, the Americana is about three and a half acres, but...
Three and a half, and this is two and a half?
No.
No, no.
We'll need to get the exact size for you on that.
Okay, because I'm trying to put in perspective.
Sure.
Go ahead. Let me come back to that.
We'll come back to the square footages, but again, the idea of creating a variety of spaces for the residents that become important as part of their day-to-day lifestyle. Residents these days are living beyond the four walls of their unit. These are very much important social spaces for the residents that live in these spaces. The third piece are the roof decks. Roof decks, obviously, they're removed from the street, but at the same time, they are also taking up part of the garage podiums themselves. They become visual assets for the tall towers that Rodney spoke about that surround this property in terms of what people are looking down on. Instead of simply just seeing the top of a garage, we have these wonderful visual amenities. And they, of course, take the more active recreation, if you will, swimming and whatnot, and take that up off the street level, up above the units, so we're mitigating noise in that regard as well. And this is the amenity deck on Building B. Both amenity decks typically pools, swimming pools, lounge areas. There's a rec building associated with each one that Tobin touched on as well. The fourth thing is this Paseo. From a residential point of view, it creates a wonderful entry to those units that front onto it. But perhaps more importantly is the idea of connecting the adjacent streets, Orange and North Central, shortening that block in the north-south direction, and really reclaiming what is vehicular space, a parking lot at this point in time, and reclaiming it for the pedestrian and for cyclists. It becomes an active space with an entry, with bike parking along here. It's shaded. We want to create a wonderful pedestrian environment that becomes part of the network that Glenn spoke of earlier in terms of pedestrian system within Glendale. And then finally, Duran Park. This is an interesting challenge for us personally. The landscape architect for the original Duran Park is a close colleague of mine. I very much admire his work, and this gave us an opportunity to really build on what I thought was a high-quality design that he had done, and really try to take that and expand it by, by all accounts, 70 percent, I think is what we've added to it, and really make, again, important connections. It creates the, it's the fourth wall of this park. If we have the street and these two edges, creating that fourth wall for a proper sense of enclosure that has eyes on the park now on three of the four sides, not including the street. And again, this idea of connecting beyond the project, connecting through and all the way up to Pioneer, the ability to create that important north-south pedestrian passageway and bicycle passageway. We touched on the feedback from the community about what they wanted to see was obviously, it's an open expanse of lawn, there's play equipment for children, but perhaps some of the things that we heard that were missing were the idea of more shaded seating, more areas to read a book, smaller areas that could accommodate a two-person conversation, some additional areas that might be programmed for outdoor yoga or outdoor exercise, that type of thing. The idea of creating more flexible space that complemented what was happening in the park already. And so for us, all of these things, all of these landscape moves, while obviously a benefit to the project itself, more importantly, one could argue, are a real benefit for the neighborhood and for Glendale. And with that, I conclude my remarks, and I believe we'll open to questions or...
You might not know what to say as last, but you sure know how to address statements.
[laughter] It's a bad sign when that's what takes over your presentation.
[laughing] Good point, good point.
If you would, we do have a couple of, one more small presentation, and then I'll return and wrap things up, but I wanted to ask Alan Loomis to answer the question that you would, and then after that, Tony Licaciato from Meridian is going to address some of the concerns that were raised at the Stage One design.
Is there a card in for him?
He's part of the presentation.
That was, that's part of the presentation.
Oh, he was? Oh, I'm sorry, forgot.
Very quickly, Mayor Weaver, to answer your question, that central courtyard at grade on Site A is a little under a quarter acre, just shy of 10,000 square feet.
Okay.
It's about 100 by 90 feet.
And if you're down in Americana the weekends, they have exercise classes out in the lawn. It's growing and growing and growing, the number of people come from outside Americana to exercise together, and that's, could happen in this site too. Other group of people have it right there would be great.
I believe the central courtyard at grade on Site B is a little bit smaller, but they're pretty comparable.
No, I'm talking A.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. You didn't speak. Did you turn, did they put a card in for you?
It's part of the presentation.
I know.
Oh, I'm the city's consultant, Mr. Mayor.
All the presenters turn their cards.
Tony Locaciato, Principal of Meridian Consultants, with the Planning Division's Environmental Review Consultant, working with them on the EIR. Guest staff wanted to make sure we finished with the really exciting part of this presentation this afternoon, which will be the EIR. First, so staff wanted me to briefly review the environmental review process, the city conducted for this project, and then the contents and findings of the draft and final EIR. And I'm going to comment a little more on a couple of the specific topics that have been of most concern and comment. This environmental review process was conducted over the last six months. The notice of preparation of the EIR was issued in May. A public scoping meeting was held then, and at the end of that scoping period, Planning Division determined the topics to be addressed in the EIR. Comment letters, a handful of comment letters were received in response to notice of preparation, standard letter from the LA County Department of Public Works on items they like to see addressed in the city's environmental documents, a letter from LA Metro about doing analysis on congestion management program facilities in the city, a standard letter from the South Coast Air Quality Management District on the items they recommended the city address in the document, then a letter from the Glendale Historical Society. We'll talk more about that analysis in the EIR. A comment letter from the Park Towers Homeowners Association on traffic circulation issues they wanted addressed, and one of the residents of Park Tower also submitted a letter. So after that scoping was over, the preparation of the technical studies in the draft EIR began. Draft EIR was released for a 45-day review period in August. That period ended in October, and we prepared response to comments in the final EIR. The contents of the draft EIR, given, Section One, introduction on the process, Section Two, an executive summary, full description of the project in Section Three. Section Four has all the analysis of the individual topics. And I think importantly for the city right now, that not only includes analysis of this project, but cumulative impact analysis. There's a list of every project, passed, recently approved, under construction, and recently completed through not only the downtown-specific plan area, but throughout the city. That was considered in the cumulative impact analysis. Alternatives are required to be looked at in every EIR, and some of the other sections required by the sequel guidelines. The appendices include the various technical studies, including the air quality analysis calculations, historic resources report that was prepared, Phase One environmental site assessments that looked at these two properties, noise calculations, and then the traffic study. These are the topics that were scoped in to be addressed in the EIR. Section on aesthetics, air quality and greenhouse gas emissions, again, as requested by the South Coast Air Quality Management District. Cultural resources, which focuses on looking at the buildings on the site as potential historic resources, land use and planning, consistency of the project with the DSP general plan. Noise, both looking at temporary construction noise and permanent changes in the noise environment. Public services section looks at the effect on the city's fire protection, emergency medical services, on police protection, and on schools. Population and housing, how does the growth, residential population growth, this project would result in fit in with the growth projections that are in both local and regional plans and policies? Traffic and transportation section summarizes the information from the project traffic study. Utility and service system section looks at potential impacts on the city's water and sewer services, and on solid waste collection and disposal. That's the comment that the county Public Works Department turns in regularly to all the cities in the county to make sure that's looked at. And then last, effect on recreation facilities. Through that scoping process, these were the effects determined not to be significant, and for that reason, they aren't studied in detail in the EIR. One category of the aesthetic impact analysis, which is whether the site contained any natural scenic resources that would be disturbed, that didn't need to be studied further. Agricultural resources, biological resources, not present on this property. Geology and soils impacts didn't have to be looked at on grade construction and no other known hazards in the area. Hazards and hazardous materials, based on those Phase One environmental site assessments, there were no issues that required further analysis. Hydrology and water quality, also no potential effects that required further study, and no known mineral resources on the site need to be looked at. So then, through the analysis in the EIR, this is a list of the impacts that were determined to be less than significant. First, for aesthetics, the change to the visual character of the site and the effect on the visual character of the immediate area, lighting, shade, and shadow, those impacts not significant. Air quality, looks at several different aspects. First is the growth that this project would result in consistent with the air quality management plan. It is. Greenhouse gas emissions, we looked at the emissions, total amount, the energy conservation features of the project. Those emissions are not significant. And then also, the air district asked for localized construction analysis. So we're looking at during the demolition, during the construction, you got a lot of particles in the air, would those localized impacts, temporary as they are during construction, be significant? They will not, based on the air district standard. Cultural resources, did want to spend a minute on, again, the Historical Society commented on this. First, I wanted to remind everybody here, and also brief the council, on what your downtown-specific plan EIR did. You did, the downtown-specific plan EIR included a reconnaissance-level historic resources review. What that reconnaissance level means, and it was explained in the DSP EIR, the purpose of that survey was to identify potential historic resources that needed to be evaluated in further detail. And in fact, there's a mitigation measure in the downtown-specific plan EIR. It's mitigation measure 4.4 that says if a project is proposed on a site that has potential resources identified in the DSP, do an intensive survey to determine if they actually are historic resources. The site contains these three medical office buildings. Those were identified as potentially having some historic significance, so for that reason, a detailed study was completed. And that looked at the history of development, the architectural characteristics of these buildings. There are three buildings on the site, three low-rise brick medical office buildings. So first, the study looked at the development, because we wanted to see if these were master-planned, if they developed as part of a larger complex. The research shows they weren't master-planned. The first building, 540 North Central, was built in 1953. That was leased up, so they built another one at 633 North Central, 1960, and then the 607 North Central building in 1963. So they were, they were designed to build separately, but in a sequential order. They were built by Cozy and Rhodes here locally. They were in Glendale. They owned property and built buildings. They didn't hire an architect to design them. They had an engineer design the buildings, so there's no architect of record. Then when you look at the architectural characteristics, these are low-rise buildings, they're brick, so visually they relate, but in looking at them, there's some modern influences in the design, but if you look at them closely, they aren't really the same. Couple of the buildings have penthouses, one of them doesn't. Some have the bricks in emphasizing vertical elements around the windows, some have horizontal elements. So they really don't share some common sign characteristics. Also, while they're modern, they're not the best examples of modern buildings you have in downtown Glendale, and the modern influences don't carry from the outside, which was looked at briefly in this windshield reconnaissance survey, into the interior. Modern buildings will use the circulation elements, the stairways and the elevators as design elements. When you go inside these buildings, they're standard double, double loaded corridor buildings, offices on both sides of corridor, stairs and the elevators in standard locations. You know, some of the good buildings you have by comparison in downtown that have been preserved, the Glendale Federal Building, our North brand, and then the Fidelity Federal Building, which we worked on for the city on East Broadway, that was designed by a recognized architect, W.A. Sarmiento. He was a protege of Oscar Niemeyer, who designed Brazilia. They're really good, modern buildings. And those modern influences are not just on the outside, but carried through the interior design. And that building is now, after the county used it for years and abused the interior bit, it's been restored in accordance with the Secretary of Interior standards, and now it's being used. So those are some of the good buildings. These buildings, when we looked at them in detail, the historical resource consultant didn't find that they're really good examples of modern architecture, or that they relate to each other. Also, in looking at the other aspects, looked at research historic significance, weren't any historic events associated with the buildings. The gentleman who built them, Cozy and Rhodes, while they were active locally in the business community, they really weren't important in the history of Glendale or development of Glendale. And again, the design was not the notable work of any architect of record, generative record. So those are the reasons why, even though the DSP said maybe these are historic, the detailed research showed that they really don't make the level of being historic in terms of your local standards, state, or the national standards. Hazards and hazardous materials were found not to be significant. Land use and planning was already covered by staff. The projects are, they're consistent with the applicable general plan and DSP standards, no impacts there. Noise, we look at the change in traffic, increase in roadway noise levels, that's less than significant. The population growth associated with the project is within all the current growth projections, so that's not significant. Public services, the impact on schools, less than significant. And the project-level impacts on the police protection services, also not significant. Public utilities, water, solid waste impacts, not significant. Traffic, interesting is, we've got existing uses on the site, the apartment units, these medical office buildings that are pretty much fully leased up. So when you look at the trip generation from those current uses, and the trip generation from the proposed apartment units, it's almost a wash. So you're basically trading out, right now, there's about 3,370 trips a day for the existing uses. The new use, maybe 20 trips less, if those IT trip rates are right on. So essentially, a wash on the daily level. When you look at the important PMP hour, the proposed apartments will generate about 30 less trips than the current uses do. So again, about a wash. Since you've now got residential uses coming onto the site, where you have mostly office buildings now, you get a few more trips in the AM peak hour, when those residents are leaving, but again, only about 33 more trips when you look at the trip generation rates. So that's why the traffic impacts really aren't going to be significant or different, because it's essentially the same trip generation rate. ER does identify some impacts that were significant, along with measures to reduce those impacts to less than significant. Air quality, the air district, given the proximity of not only this site, but a lot of other property in Glendale, did the 134 freeway, said, take a look at the, you know, the localized air quality around the freeway, whether that could have any effect on residents. So a health risk assessment was prepared, and that study showed that there would be no long-term health risk to any residents here, frankly, in that belt along the freeway. Cultural resources, archaeology and paleontology, anytime you disturb a site, you might hit something, so there's some standard mitigation measures in there. No known resources on the site. Utilities and service systems, the city has a sewer impact fee in place to keep upgrading the sewer mains and system in downtown, which will be impacted by the development, by the DSP. Noise, the interior noise levels will meet the city's standards when we take into account the attenuation provided by the structure itself. Other types of operational noise, from air conditioning units, loading areas, all of those will be lower than the city's standards. Public services, the fire department identified some measures to make sure the fire flow is adequate for the building, so that mitigates that potential impact. Last, this ER, like most of the ERs prepared for your projects in downtown, does identify a handful of impacts that are unavoidable. It means there isn't any mitigation, take them down to a less than significant level. Temporary air quality emissions from construction, that's pretty much standard throughout the air basin. In order to make sure all construction impacts are mitigated to fullest extent feasible, and it would kind of forward, the air district set a low daily threshold, and pretty much most projects go over it. And even when you put in all the mitigation the air district recommends, you still end up over on a pounds-per-day basis, but that's temporary during the period of construction. The air district didn't have any comments on that in their letter. Noise, temporary construction and noise while the project's being built. Then also, the city's noise ordinance, like most noise ordinances, has interior and exterior noise standards. For residential uses, the exterior noise standard, 65 decibels. That's mostly thinking about backyard, single-family homes. You don't want to be noisier than 65 decibels in those outdoor areas. The project does have some outdoor areas, if you count the balconies, really not a backyard. When we ran the roadway noise contours, it'll be a couple decibels above 65. So for that reason, that's identified as unavoidable. If somebody's out in their balcony, it might be 67 or 68 decibels rather than 65. Two or three decibels is not normally something most of us can really hear or perceive, so it's not going to be abnormally loud, but it will be a couple decibels above the exterior standard. For that reason, it's identified as an unavoidable impact. Recreation, as the council's aware, you've adopted a fee that is being phased in. At this point, projects aren't paying the full fee, and for that reason, contribute to cumulative impacts on the city's recreation facilities. And last, public services, the downtown-specific planning ER identified that all these projects together do contribute cumulatively on a long-term basis to impacts to the police and fire services that the city looks at when looking at allocating its general fund revenues. But as there's no specific mechanism in place at this point, that long-term impact is identified as one that could be potentially significant. Again, at the project level, the fire and police department don't feel this project has a significant effect by itself. The ER considers some alternatives, as required by law, to provide additional information. First, the no-project alternative, which is required by state law, then reducing the density on both Site B and Site A. The final EIR, which I'm sure you were happy to see, was a thinner document when you got to it. It's because the city received only a handful of comment letters on the project. Those letters didn't change the conclusions in your draft EIR. Contains an updated summary, the eight comments, letter responses to those comments, and a few minor revisions to the draft EIR. The letters received from public agencies were a standard form letter from the Native American Heritage Commission, asking everybody to follow state law if any resources are encountered during construction. Caltrans asked for additional analysis. They asked for the city to look at the SR 134 westbound off-ramp at Brandon Good, that wasn't analyzed in the draft, so that additional analysis was completed. Cueing level analysis was completed that showed this project in cumulative conditions won't result in that ramp operating at an unacceptable level of service. South Coast Air Quality Management District provided a set of kind of detailed technical comments on the health risk assessment, on the assumption, so we went ahead and updated the health risk assessment with the assumptions the air district recommended. We put that in the appendix. It didn't change. They were real minor changes in the assumption. There was no changes to the conclusions of the health risk assessment. LA County Department of Public Works asked for a few updates and information to be added. Those were done. There are also letters from organizations and individuals, mostly the same set that commented in the NOP. The Park Towers Homeowners Association put in some comments on traffic. Responses were provided. Glendale Historical Society asked some questions about the historic resource analysis. Responses were provided to that. One of the individual residents in Park Tower also submitted some traffic comments. And then last, environmental group here in the county that focuses on greenhouse gas impacts called CARD, this new submitted a letter and asked some questions about the greenhouse gas analysis, and we provided responses to those. So that's an overview of six months' worth of work on the ER on this project for you.
Thank you very much. If you would, turn in a card slide of complete record.
I will.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Almost done. Again, I just wanted to wrap up everything that was covered so far. Actually, I just want to go through the actions that we're asking the city council to approve
That the first one?
Okay, so the action items before you. It's a resolution certifying the environmental impact report. I want to say a motion approving the Stage Two Design for Site A, another motion approving the Stage Two Design for Site B, a resolution approving the general plan map amendment, and an introduction of an ordinance to... an introduction of an ordinance to amend the zoning map, introduction of an ordinance to amend the downtown specific plan maps, introduction of an ordinance to approve the development agreement, and then a motion approve standard variances to both Site A and B. And because of comments that we got earlier this morning, we had to revise those motions. Those have been revised. And then, I just wanted to mention also, the next item on the agenda is related to this project, and that's the alley vacation case 173V. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to show you where the existing alleys that are proposed to be vacated are. This is one of the alleys here. That is Alley 246 that runs north-south between Doran Street and Pioneer Drive. And then it's also a vacation of the 150 easterly feet of Alley 247, which is right here. And then we also included here, this is the, this would be the location of the new alley that would connect what's commonly called Pioneer Alley to Pioneer Drive. So that's the next item, but it's related to this item, so I just wanted to mention that. And with that, it concludes our presentation. Again, staff, consultants, the developer, all here to answer questions as best we can.
Well, I was told it would take an hour, and it did. Any questions yet we have public? Okay, Mr. Goni, can I ask you a question first?
By all means. Also, if I may, Mr. Mayor, add that we received some comments to which we have prepared written responses that will be put on the file for members of the public to see. The comments were received over the last two days. We have responded written comments to those.
My question was, the freshman, when we did the downtown specific plan, we're aware that on the west side of Central, that we're going to have jogs and stuff.
Yes.
I seem to recall that we didn't go into detail of identifying every land ownership and zagging along, that we more or less hit straight lines, knowing that when it came to specific projects, we might have to go in and tinker with the zoning on those pieces. Is that about right?
That's accurate. And what we did, we did invite every landowner to comment on it, because we were not necessarily aware who owned what. Had people actually come forward to tell us that they owned both these properties, both sides of the designation of downtown specific plan boundaries, we would have actually, we would have proposed to change the boundary at that time. The properties we were aware of, we did. The ones we were not aware of, like this one, we didn't.
Okay, good. I remember it was okay then. Thank you, Mr. Goni. Okay, I have some public speakers. Sam Manukian, can we try two minutes and we'll see where it goes?
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Manukian. I'm the director of the Commercial Division for RE/MAX at Glendale, and wanted to make a couple comments regarding this project. On November 7, 2006, was the date majority of you voted for the downtown specific plan. And these were the words that you used to describe this zoning. "We're going to reduce development in the hillside and bring it to an area that needs development. With this zoning, we will bring vibrant downtown housing in an area that can handle the impact and needs the occupancy." I want to say thank you and say congratulations. With projects like this, you have achieved that. But zoning is only one part of it. The second part to this process is a developer willing to take the risk, and that developer today is Carmel Partners. Here are just a small sample of awards Carmel Partners has received from the real estate industry. Most outstanding model, best garden apartment community, best in-the-west low-rise apartment project, community of the year. This is just a small sample of the awards that they've won. And I think we should be proud to have a developer of this caliber come to this city and spent easily over $100 million in this city. And that $100 million goes a long way between employment and, most important other factor to this is, it brings in the housing and brings in the traffic, the foot traffic that the other projects need in order for it to succeed. Please approve this project and congratulations. Thank you.
Let's take root-term sales, followed by Michelle Fulk.
Mayor and members of the council, good afternoon. My name is Timothy Salomon, Vice President with Heritage Housing Partners. We were very pleased to be your partner on the development of Doran Gardens adjacent to the proposed Carmel Partners apartment building. My comments fall into the following areas related to design, construction, and operations. Early on, our concerns really were with how the park would expand and be maintained, how the design would transition from the high-rise five-story building to the adjacent Doran Gardens. And then ongoing operations to make sure that there's a good relationship with the homeowners that have invested in Doran Gardens. Carmel Partners was very open to having conversations, and in fact, we co-sponsored a workshop with the homeowners that was held in early summer of this past, of this current year. What we really found from that workshop was that the homeowners were concerned about making a passive park, one that would minimize a huge amount of activity from outside the neighborhood. To the mayor's comments, we certainly don't think we want to have a citywide yoga destination on our hands there, but something that would be contributing to what already the park has delivered, but be more passive. The homeowners were also concerned about security in the neighborhood, especially with additional park space. And then on the short term, they were concerned about the mitigations for the dust, for the noise rather, and dust during construction. Carmel was certainly responsive to these very logical community interests, and they were responsive in the following ways. And here's what we understand. First of all, Carmel has certainly introduced changes of the plans, both in the park as well as into the building, that address the concerns I think the community have, and we're pleased to see that. Going forward in operations, I think, is really where the rubber hits the road. You know, we have had challenges with maintenance in the park, and I'm very pleased that the city has really engaged on that, and the park is looking really good again. I think as we add, as we add space to the park, the ongoing operations of the park will be an issue. I'm pleased to hear from Carmel Partner's staff that they will be maintaining the park for five years. In addition, because they're an ongoing operator, Carmel will be operating security for their own building as well as the Paseo. And I think they'll give a watchful eye to the community as well. They've been open to that, and although it's not their responsibility to provide security to public park, I think they want the overall neighborhood to be safe, secure, and really an attractive place for their considerable investment and their tenants, as well as, you know, our 60 families living at Doran Gardens. So they've agreed to actually come out and meet again with the Doran Gardens Homeowners Association. I'm pleased to announce that we've had our election for the first resident-controlled Homeowners Association Board there, and Carmel will be coming to meet with them soon. And I think one of the big issues really going forward is just maintaining that good communication, so that on the short term, these unavoidable impacts that were identified, you know, noise and vibration and dust or things like that can be minimized as much as possible, and that we have someone that can be called if there are issues that are ongoing. And then in the future, as the park is up and running and their operations are up and running, that we have a good relationship and Carmel maintains that sort of open-door policy for their neighbors. And I think that certainly that's in their best interest, and they've been willing to engage in that. So generally, we're supportive of the project. We appreciate the efforts that Carmel has gone to speak to us, as well as the residents there, and look forward to an ongoing relationship with them through the Doran Gardens Homeowners Association. Thank you very much.
Thank you. For the yoga, I met on their own private property.
I'm sorry, what was that, sir?
I met the yoga class on their own private courtyard, not out on the public.
Oh, right, absolutely, sir.
Okay. Michelle Fulk, followed by Lisette Corona.
I'm Michelle Fulk, Managing Director of Housing with Overland Pacific and Cutler. One of our specialties is tenant relocation. I'd say 99% of the time, we provide our services to public agencies or to entities that receive financial assistance from public agencies. So when I received a call a couple months ago from Carmel Partners, and they said that Glendale city staff have referred us, we've worked for Glendale directly for decades, I just assumed Glendale was providing them with financial assistance. So I started quizzing him on the different types of funding, so I could figure out which relocation regulations applied. And I was very surprised to find out, there is no public funds, there are no public funds involved with this. So although I hated to say it, I said, you know, you really don't need us. I appreciate the call, but there's no state relocation regulation or federal relocation regulation that applies. There's no rent stabilization ordinance. As a private land transaction, you have the right to give them a 30- or 60-day vacate notice, any existing tenants there, to clear your site. And the response was, we want to do more than that. We understand that this move is going to be inconvenient and stressful to the existing tenants, and while we think our project's going to be a great contribution to the community, we want to do more. So we began a dialogue about what we typically would do for tenants under a public project. And I said, one of the three main things is length of time. How long do they have to move? They typically would get 90 days' notice, and he said, let's give them more, which they are. I said, they are stressed about finding replacement housing. And we said, we can do that. We have services, we can give them lists to available places to live based on where they want to live and what kind of unit, take into consideration the rent they can pay. And most importantly, I said, people on fixed incomes or low incomes are nervous about where they're going to come up with security deposits and first month's rents and moving expenses. So we began a conversation about how they could offer financial assistance as well as advisory assistance. And I signed a relocation agent who's been working with the families and offering the assistance, and those that are willing to work with us. I guess I just wanted to let you know Carmel Partners really does care about what's happening to the tenants, and they're doing whatever they can through us to offer that assistance.
Thank you. Mr. Nodrian?
Don't we have a just cause eviction ordinance, which would require relocation assistance?
It requires a payment of a fee, which I think, from my understanding, they're paying well in excess of that.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisette Corona, and I am the relocation consultant for Overland Pacific and Cutler. And I've been meeting with all of the tenants, and they've expressed, two of them have expressed their appreciation, and they wrote a letter. And one of the tenants wants to be anonymous. I'll read the letter now. "We want to thank Carmel for providing the monetary help during this relocation period. It is very helpful to not only have this provided, but the help with the relocation itself is as appreciative. Thank you for making this transaction period more enjoyable." The other tenant, he is Dave Pollak in Unit Number 9. He said, "I am thankful and grateful the new owners are helping us out financially. Every little bit helps. What is really helping my situation is that I am receiving plenty of time to relocate." They're receiving, his option, he's going with option number two, he's receiving a little more money than the ordinance requires, and he's moving out till March. He also said, "We are not being asked to move without advance notice." So he's getting plenty of time.
Great. Thank you.
So they're moving already?
No. He's searching for replacement dwelling, but he has till March.
Project hasn't been approved yet. How are they going for it?
Well, if, you know, if it is approved.
I know, that's what I think, too.
Just technology. I'm just, I know, I mean, good point. Now, Mr. Commissioner?
What wasn't mentioned in the presentation, how many affordable housing units are going to be provided, if any? No?
Zero. All right. Zero.
It is a microwave project.
I have to whisper. Say, zero. I understand. I understand.
Eric Kessian, followed by RP Stenian.
Hello, City Council. My name is Eric Kessian. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission, and I want to elaborate a little bit on the comments that the commission gave on this project. The commission really had two major concerns for the project, and one is the amount of massing that's offered for the project, and also having to amend the downtown specific plan to add a whole, two parcels to the actual, the transitional zone where part of parcel A is. And we thought that the amount of massing was not consistent with the intent of the downtown specific plan. The second concern we had is the lack of east-west connection in the current project. This is a map of the general area. I have a laser pointer here. And as you can see, Doran currently goes through here, it has an east-west connection. And if you go straight through, some people, and including the people who live here, at least some people who I've talked to, use this alleyway to get through here and actually go across this parking lot, which I know it's a private parking lot right now, but people do existing, use that as an existing basis. They go through here, and then they cross over Central to go, continue on Doran, or make a left or right here. If this project is built over right here, that will be completely eliminated. So I know there's been a lot of talk about how you, the pedestrian connections here, but the reality is, if you can go to the next slide. So you have, you have the proposed development right here. You have a Paseo that's proposed right here. If a pedestrian has to go, sort of, is going east-west on Doran, they will have to go down here, all the way, or either cross here, go around here, and then go up here to go to the alley, or go here. They can't actually use this Paseo to cross right here, because there is no, there is no crosswalk right here. And there isn't any proposed crosswalk. And if you put a crosswalk there, it's not very safe, because you'd need to put lights for that crosswalk, because that's a pretty bad intersection. That's a T-intersection over there. The other significant thing of why pedestrians or bicyclists would actually like to use this alley, I personally use it myself, is because of the pedestrian bridge right here. And that hasn't been discussed in any of the presentations that I've seen, which I find surprising. But, for example, if you're a pedestrian or on a bike, and you want to cross over to go to north, north of the 134, especially this part of Glendale, you're going to have to cross over a freeway off-ramp, and that's not very safe. But if you have a good east-west connection, you can go through the alley, you can go up Columbus, and then you could take the pedestrian bridge going over there. This eliminates that. People use this now, but it eliminates that access that people have to this alley. I've talked to one resident, if I could just go one more minute? That's okay.
One more minute?
Yeah. I've talked to one resident of the Doran Gardens. He said that the developers came and spoke to them about the project, but they really only presented what was happening at the Doran Gardens and the expansion. They didn't explain the rest of the project. And when he found out that the alleyway, the east-west connection was going to be blocked, he was against it, because he actually uses it. They get off from the back alley, and they use that connection to go to Doran. So I'm asking for there to be some kind of a Paseo, or at least for this Paseo to be moved here. The Planning Commission unanimously voted for these concerns, and we thought they were significant enough to be addressed.
But you're talking about pedestrians, bicyclists that are going across private property right now?
Yeah, it's a...
And you want it now to be maintained as public property?
The project has a lot, a number of public Paseos on their private property. And if we are truly building a project that enhances pedestrian connectivity, then I think we want to look at the project more seriously and see how it actually affects those flows. And currently, as it stands, I think it would actually make it harder for pedestrians to go around.
But Eric, you were talking about the cars driving across that parking lot, too. So you think they should put a road through the middle of their property?
I personally don't think you could put a, you could put a road. The Planning Commission did not recommend putting a road. We recommended having at least a pedestrian and bicycle access.
Bring up the people that are driving through the property. Why did you bring that up?
I brought it up to point out that people are using that currently as an existing basis, and that it's, the project doesn't reflect what the current reality of it. What I talked about is not part of the mobility study, but I find the mobility study lacked that part of it. And obviously, the downtown specific plan is lacking in some parts of it, where we're having to amend the specific plan to add a whole section to it. So those are really our comments.
Do you think that using an alley for bicycles makes any sense? To me, you've got Pioneer, you've got Duran. That seems to me a much better east-west connection than alleys where people can be backing out of driveways and-
Those would be really good east-west connections, but however, they end at a T-intersection. If you can go back, yeah. So the only east, true east-west connection on this map is Lexington. So you have to go all the way south-
No, no, you know, I mean, you can turn right on bikes, you can turn left on bikes.
Well, I-
But just the alley itself, I mean, to have bicycles up and down alleys, I don't know.
You could turn right or left, but you're putting, I mean, there is a bike lane currently right now that they've just installed here. It's a very small bike lane, and Central Avenue is not very comfortable to ride on, even with that bike lane. A lot of people, myself personally, we like to ride on Orange Street, because it's a very calm street, and it's just really easy to ride on. So it's a great north-south connection here. You can go on Duran Street, make a left here, and go immediately to Columbus, and then take the pedestrian bridge to go north. You can't do that with the existing plan.
You're doing the same thing. You're going across that parking lot.
Well, yeah, you go across the parking lot, go through the alley, make a right on Columbus and go here, so you don't have to, you can avoid the freeway passes here, which are very dangerous. The other way you could do it is, I mean, you'd have to, if you live in this area, you'd have to come all the way south, make a right on Lexington, and then go up to get to that. And that just creates significant delay.
Why are you going to all the way to Lexington? You've got Milford, you've got Duran, you've got Pioneer.
Well, I'm talking about if you're here, and you want just a continuous east-west connection. You don't have that east, continuous east-west connection. If you're on Orange Street, you'd have to go on Milford, go here, do another red light, or, you know, this tricky intersection right here to make a right on Milford. These T-intersections are just a little complicated, and it creates an unsafe area. I mean, with two recent pedestrian deaths in, on California here on Central. Central is not a very safe place to ride or walk on.
So the city really messed up by putting bicycle lanes on Central?
I-
No ones.
I think there's different ideas on that, but I think the purpose of putting the bike lanes was actually to reduce the sidewalks and to allow for more flow on Central Avenue. It wasn't really, the intent wasn't really to make it a safer place for bikes.
Really?
That's personally my opinion.
So you would have them redesign the whole project to put a pedestrian and bike way through the middle of their project?
I am stating what the Planning Commission recommended to City Council. It's up to you, the City Council, to actually take that up, but we do, we were concerned about the lack of east-west connection, and basically the elimination of this east-west alley connection to Duran.
Yeah. Only problem is, it is private property. You go at your own risk on private property.
And so is the paseo that's, that's proposed. That's, I think it's, I think it's right here. That's a paseo that really leads to nowhere, since there's no crosswalk over there.
Well, it looks like the traffic, or the bicycle master plan will have to be reviewed again by staff, since we messed up apparently on Central, which we just painted.
Just a quick-
Thank you.
Go ahead. Just a quick question, Eric. So that I understand correctly, that east-west connection doesn't truly exist now, right? Because everyone has to go, whether they're driving, bike, you know, cycling, or as pedestrians walking, they have to go through a private-
Yeah, they go through the driveway currently.
Right, so it's really not even there?
I mean, well, in a, in a technical sense, I guess it's not, but in a, how people actually exist, use, the land uses existing, you know, and the existing condition, it's there.
Some people, I mean, I drive through all the time. I've never, ever considered driving through that parking lot. I didn't know you could even get through the other end. I mean, I-
I do it all the time, and many people have for many years. What's the, what's the time limit for prescriptive easement?
Probably five years, but I don't know.
Five years? Okay.
I parked in the parking lot, but I haven't driven through-
That's not an issue before, it's not.
That's not an issue?
No.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker, RP Castanian, followed by Humberto Narro.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is RP Castanian. I am a business owner in Glendale, and I am the Vice President of the Armenian-American Chamber of Commerce, and I am here today to speak in support of proposed project by Carmel Partners. Carmel Partners has expressed to us that the expansion of the city park is a very important component to the project, especially in an area to the city that is currently underserved and needs more park space. Carmel Partners has prepared a high-quality, well-designed project that will be an asset to this neighborhood and overall a benefit to the city of Glendale. This project will create new home for families and will create new jobs. Also, the new residents will shop at the existing downtown businesses and eat at the restaurants in the surrounding area, and that ensures the long-term success of our downtown. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to comment on this important project for our city. We do support Carmel Partners. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker, Humberto Narro.
Good afternoon. I want to make a quick comment here. Was it really prepared? I just came by to just make a quick comment. I've recently moved into the Duran Gardens, and I've spoken to a few of the residents, and we were actually quite excited about the new park, the units going up, and we feel it's going to really improve the ownership or the value of our homes there. So we're excited to have them build, clean up the neighborhood a bit. Yeah, so we're just excited. And I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a resident. Not everyone agrees, you know. I actually recently have been elected to the board, but I'm not speaking as a member of the board. Just a resident who just moved in. Just moved to Glendale, enjoying the area here. And if I can make a comment about the bicycle, that bicycle lane is great on Central. I use it all the time. I'm a cyclist, and we're enjoying the bike, bike path. As far as the alleyway in the back, it's actually a good idea that it's going to be blocked off, because that's our, really, it's our backyard, and we're having quite a bit of traffic flowing back and forth, west to east or east to the west. And it is a bit dangerous when we do exit. So that's funny, I didn't even think about that until the gentleman brought that to our attention. So, and I've never really seen anyone riding any bicycles there, so I'm not too sure what that's how it counts.
So that's, that's your way of getting, of parking? You park through the alley?
Yes, yes, we have a entryway through the back there.
Right, so a lot of cars going through there is probably not the greatest thing.
No, when we pull out, we pull out very slowly. We ask everyone to take their time when they're turning left or right, because some people-
They speed.
Fly, yes, speed down the alleyway. It's dangerous. And I've noticed that instead of turning right, which is headed east, if you head east, you end up in the parking lot of the medical facility, which is very busy. So you really don't want to go that, down that east route. Kind of want to just exit, I don't know the name of the street, but it's west of us. You exit that area and then continue on. So it's, actually, I think it's going to be good for all of us there. It's going to slow down the traffic. And we're not the only ones that use that exit. There's also the apartments to the west, west of us. There's an apartment complex that will exit there, so I think it's going to be a good thing. We're just looking forward to the project.
Okay. I've watched your complex being torn down, what was there? I watched the construction, slap, pour. I toured inside the different units was built. You have a beautiful project there.
It is, it is. I'm very excited to be an owner there, and to be part of Glendale. I'm enjoying living here. Thank you.
I think you'll like your neighbor.
Yes.
If it passes.
Passes, sorry. Well, thank you for your time. Excuse me.
Mr. Weaver, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Someone, I don't know who, all of the people who presented. One of the commenters referred to the paseo in Project B as a paseo to nowhere. Is it a paseo to nowhere? Does it dead-end? Does it go somewhere? Can you walk through it to go somewhere? I was looking at the site plan, but I'm not quite sure.
The paseo you're referring to is on Site B, which is the east side. That paseo, on the south side of that property, connects Orange Street to Central Street.
So it does connect Orange to Central?
And it will be maintained public. It is part of, they're offering that, or they're building that, to meet their requirements for public open space for that particular site. So it is a, it does connect Orange Street to Central.
Right. Maybe the comment was just that it doesn't go cross Central then. I'm not sure. Okay.
Okay. Is that the end of, I have no more cars, no more, nothing from Carmel want to say anything? I might have known.
Thank you. We don't. Our team has no further comments. We consider, we appreciate your consideration, we ask for your approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing. I gotta head you at that time. Okay.
Well, I have some questions that need to go on the record.
Well, I can do it after I close the public hearing?
I want to just leave it open for the purposes of-
I'll reopen the public hearing.
Questions of the consultants.
Questions of staff before I close the public hearing. Mr. Najarian?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I want the friends from Carmel to relax. This is about as close to a slam dunk as any project can be, if you've been watching council last year or so. So my questions are mainly to get the answers on the record, and I hope Brittany, Brittany can get some of the points across as well. So the first, and if, I hope I'm not getting into anyone's dinnertime. I know it's five, we usually take a dinner. We can always continue this for another-
No, I don't eat. I don't eat. It's your dinner.
Okay, so various levels of questions. On Central, are we taking the opportunity to widen the street in light of the fact the entire block is being redeveloped? I can ask that to anyone. I mean, here's an opportunity, is this not, here's a question. Is this not a great opportunity to widen Central, considering it's a significant stretch on both sides?
At the time that we proposed the downtown specific plan, and the downtown specific plan was adopted, we had the mobile downtown mobility plan. In the mobility plan, there were specific street widens and lane additions to the traffic that were, were included as mitigation measures. They were on Colorado. This part of Central was not at all considered, nor was it proposed to be expanded as a mitigation measure for the downtown specific plan. However, we did at the time identify Central as a primarily vehicular connection between the freeway and the core of downtown, and the plans that were followed for the street improvements on Central, and Mr. Galanian can speak more specifically on the engineering side of it, were consistent with that. However, that was never included as part of the mitigation in the downtown specific plan.
The answer is, we never did. We never thought about that.
We did discuss all of the mitigations that were necessary for traffic, and Central was not included for widening. We did talk about maintaining the number of lanes on Central if Central was ever going to be improved, which I think Mr. Galanian can attest that we did maintain the number of lanes, but we never talked about widening. We did talk about widening parts of Colorado, and which we have continued to do.
That's already four lanes, parking lanes, bicycle lanes-
That's right.
-and a turn lane.
That's right.
Pretty wide street.
Nobody ever mentioned the number of residents we can expect to live in this project. Is there a number that we have in mind?
Let me ask the staff if they have actually, the number of-
About 1,500?
The number of units is about, how many units?
Hold on a second.
578 units, and the average household size in Glendale right now is about 2.5, and that's actually a, an overestimation for downtown housing, because downtown housing typically has smaller household sites. You can do the math and figure out that.
Here comes the answering.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, Population and Housing Section, when you net out the existing residents and use the average household size for these size units the city's been using, about 1,270, net.
Now, one of the questions I had also is regarding the impacts, the significant impacts that are unavoidable and cannot be remedied or mitigated, involving police, fire, let's go with police and fire. And somewhere in the discussion here, it says that we've blown past our population estimates for the downtown specific plan from 7,000 to some 8,000 and above. So what does that mean? And that's, in fact, that's the factor which creates these impacts to be significant, correct? And what is that? Explain that to me, because I saw that, and I keep hearing from staff, oh, we've got plenty of space, we've got plenty of space, but in the EIR, it says, oh, no, we thought that we're going to be about 7,000. Now we're higher than 8,000, and we've got a problem here. So can you address that?
Can I, can I ask, while you're doing that, sort of correlated, just, what's the benchmark for significance? Because I kept hearing during the summary of impacts, the impact is less than significant, less than, what is that, what is that? How do you determine that?
First, let me answer Councilmember Najarian's question. Actually, first, let me answer your question. There's a separate threshold of significance identified for each topic in Section Four, and to make it clear what that relationship is, and it's different for each topic. Some are from the Sequoia Guidelines Initial Study Checklist, which is used in the preliminary review. Some are recommended to the city by other agencies, such as South Coast Air Quality Management District has a whole guidebook of their own on doing Sequoia Quality Impact Analysis. They have certain numerical thresholds, how many pounds per day of certain, the criteria of pollutants they're keeping track of to make sure our quality's good in the basin. So they'll have a daily, so it'll vary. Traffic, it depends on the level of service to the intersection. So for some topics, it is a numeric standard, for others, obviously for aesthetics, it's not a numeric standard, it's qualitative, but they're identified in each and every For Councilmember Najarian, actually, I was rereading that one sentence myself this morning. I have to say that I think the way it ended up being written, it can be interpreted a couple of ways, including the way you did, and it's actually comparing an apple and an orange. That, that population estimate for the downtown specific plan of 7,000, 7,200, no, the city hasn't exceeded that. What we were looking at was the current citywide population increase from that list-related projects we have in Section Four that we're looking at for cumulative impacts. For example, the police and fire impacts are looked at, not just for the DSP, but on a citywide basis. So right now, that list of projects says, if you look at the population increase, it might be 8,260, I guess it was 8,300, but that's citywide in the DSP, you're still under the population projection.
You heard our comments, is that we're stopping the development in the rest of the city to focus at downtown.
Yeah, there's a few more-
Are you aware of any other projects?
Yes, they're, they're on, they're on the list. There's a few more in the South San Fernando Road area, the Glendale Triangle Project, and a few more proposed on those field lists down there. You're right, they aren't in your single-family neighborhood you're protecting.
I mean, so what does that mean? What is, what does that mean? To me, well, let me tell you what, what concerns me, and I'd like someone to answer, I guess. I'm seeing an EIR that has significant, unavoidable, and non-mitigatable impacts in police, in fire, and in parks. And to me, those are three of the most important issues for me when I try and overlook and I try and direct this city in the right direction. So that's a problem for me. Now, you're saying, well, that's not so much of a problem, but it's under that list of significant problems that can't be mitigated. It's a big problem for me at this point. Those are the things that I ran my last election on, and that I will continue to fight for the residents of Glendale for. Can someone from staff please explain to me what that means? And don't say it's not significant, because it's significant. It's on the list of significant impacts.
Sir, I can talk to the extent that it relates to this, this particular project. I think there is a larger discussion that I think the city manager was probably better equipped for, to discuss. As was mentioned, with, in relation to this- As was mentioned, with, in relation to this particular project, the impact on police and fire is not significant. The cumulative impact is a different discussion. The cumulative impact that was considered significant and unavoidable, that is a larger discussion of police and fire resources, and the way those are structured citywide, and how, as projects are added, what is the policy for that? So the project itself is not adding that, the cumulative impact that is. For the purpose of this project, this project does not, in and of itself, create an impact on police and fire.
Okay. So, not to be glib, but this is very similar to the straw that broke the camel's back. The straw itself didn't break the back, but its accumulation and its timing is what put us into that significant impact realm. Is that correct?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that, no. I think to the...
I thought that was a great analogy. Cumulative versus this impact alone.
Well, I think when you look at the distribution of services that we provide and the manner in which we provide them, to the extent that you are putting more density in a single area in a modern fire-equipped building, for example, with modern fire protection services, the impact on your ability to deliver service to your residents is much more cost-efficient there than it is, for example, in Chevy Chase Canyon, or Glen Oaks Canyon, or other areas of the city that are more difficult to get to where the population density is much less, and the cost per resident to deliver that service is considerably more.
So in terms of cumulative impact, what that translates for fire and police is that the building itself, for example, all these new buildings are equipped with new fire prevention standard sprinkling system and everything else. These buildings alone do not create an impact on fire and police. The cumulative impact is that with sheer numbers, the police and fire will still have to reach to the areas that the city manager is referring to. In our world, that's how we look at the two. They're apples and oranges.
I love sprinklers, and I love fire safety, but we do know, however, that the vast majority of our calls are health-related calls. So the best sprinkler in the world isn't going to stop that person from having a heart attack or needing emergency assistance.
Most certainly. So if this were a senior assisted living project, then I would generally agree with you, sir. But that is not what this project is.
Are you saying only seniors need medical assistance?
I'm saying that if you look at a distribution of our calls, the folks that most often need our emergency medical services are going to be people who are most vulnerable, the very old and the very young.
Mr. Nigarian, if I might also contribute to this conversation...
Yes, please, jump in. It's all against one here. Go ahead.
Just for point of clarification, when looking at the significance, what the impact level is for a police and fire, when you're looking at an impact, what you're looking at is whether or not the additional demands of the project, either individually or cumulatively, would result in the need for construction of new facilities, or the modification to existing facilities in order to add equipment or other things that are needed, because you have this potentially a slow rise in your calls for service. So one of the issues here that was identified is whether or not this project by itself would increase, generate increases in calls for service, such that new facilities would need to be constructed. The answer to that question was no. But looking at the larger issue throughout the city with projects who, you're having this gradual increases in calls for service, a policy decision and another look needs to be taken at whether or not funds should be contributed towards the expansion of facilities in order to accommodate new structures, or new personnel, or new trucks that may need to respond to those. So really, it has to, the impact level has to do with whether or not you are required to build a new facility. It's not necessarily calls for service. It's, are new facilities needed to be constructed, and if so, what are those impacts? So that's what police and fire impacts have to do with, is actual construction concepts. Just to kind of clarify that a little bit.
One point I would add to that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, is that in conducting the environmental analysis, and this is actually where your two questions are related, when determining whether something's significant or not, sometimes you're required to measure that against the standards that are in your plans. Sometimes those standards might be outdated, but you're still stuck with them. The prime example, and we've discussed this in the past, is as it relates to the parks, the park standard that's in our general plan, Land use element, or general plan recreation element. We have to measure that against that standard, and we've had, we've all had discussions, both internally and here, in these chambers, whether or not that's the appropriate standard. But we're still required to use that standard when looking at whether or not a project, either individually or cumulatively, has that significant impact. And so as it relates to parks, certainly, I think, looking at it without that standard, I think there are arguments to be made there. It's not going to be having a significant impact on parks, but because we must use that standard, we always come to the conclusion, at least cumulatively, that these projects are significant and unavoidable.
You raised parks. Let's talk about the parks now. That's also, that's also an area of significant impact. So why can't we do something about that? Why is that unmitigatable?
Well, we actually have. We have done something. As you remember, we adopted the parks and libraries impact fee. The parks and libraries impact fee, if the full impact fee was, by council policy, was being adopted, the impacts would have been 100% mitigated. The reason that there is that aspect in every environmental document that we do in the Downtown Specific Plan and elsewhere, even when people pay the parks impact fee, is that by policy, council decided to collect less than what is the full impact mitigation impact. In this case, because of that delta, we always have to call it out. Sequel requires us to disclose where we fall short, and we fall short because we're not collecting the full impact fee. That's the reason.
Is that despite the fact they've added that paseo adjacent to the Doran Gardens?
That is, because the adjacent paseo to the Doran Gardens is an incentive that we provided for them to get other things in lieu of that. And that in itself cannot be replacing the cumulative impact on park services. We separate the two.
Okay. One of the, you can probably stay up there, Mr. Agani. One of the other issues before, one of the many issues before us, and I do want to add a commentary, that this was over 1,300 pages of documents that we had to go through, and I have gone through, as best I could, about five to six hours, and clearly there are levels of analysis, which I am not able to do, which I would have certainly appreciated in another discussion perhaps, some assistance from either a staff member, although it would certainly be a suicide mission to help me and come up with an opinion that's contrary to the department head. And it would certainly be, an independent individual would certainly be getting the cold shoulder, were they to interact with your department staff, full knowing that it's Nigarian's guy trying to look for problems or poke holes in the staff's recommendation. So I see that as a huge problem for all of us. Today, it's my problem. Other days, it might be other council members' problem. That's something we can deal with, I spoke a little bit with the city manager on. But I want everyone to realize that I am at a severe disadvantage. I am looking at issues that your team, in conjunction with the developers, have been working on for months, as well as the experts in the EIR field. And I get this on a Friday, and it's my obligation and duty to learn about as much as I can about the project in that short period of time. And that's not so much a question, but that's just a statement that I personally feel extremely disadvantaged in analyzing this. But for what I do know, I just, I know a couple things. There's a variance that they want for this project, and these poor folks from Doran Gardens, we said, "Look, you got to put your parking underground." These folks on the Lexon Orange, these folks at Brand and Wilson, we've said, "Downtown Specific Plan says you put your parking underground." Why are we letting them put their parking above ground? What's this all about? So there's, and specifically, there's two, there's a set of four findings you have to make to approve a variance. And one of them is that the strict application of the provisions of the ordinance would result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship inconsistent with the general purpose and intent of this ordinance. What's the hardship here to put underground parking like we made everyone else do?
The variance discussion is actually one of my favorite fields in planning, because people always think that you need to show a physical hardship, and that's the only way you can make those findings. But the variance discussion is embedded in an argument for parity. One of the aspects of what we consider hardship is that, will this project, in comparison with similar projects in the immediate vicinity, be at a disadvantage at the strict application of the code? In this case, because most of the projects in the immediate vicinity have had the opportunity to build above-ground parking at approximately $25,000 less per parking space, the strict application of the code, in this case, if, when we have allowed over-ground parking elsewhere, by allowing this particular applicant to, by requiring this particular applicant to go through the strict interpretation of the code, we're putting them at a disadvantage in comparison to other people in the vicinity. Therefore, we have taken away the parity of this applicant in the face of our regulation as treated compared to other applicants. The legal discussion gets further, and I think the attorneys can answer that better. I can give you the planning interpretation part of it.
But Lexon Orange, and the legendary, and all those other buildings. I mean, and it wasn't that long ago, it was just a few months ago we approved all those. Now, all of a sudden, there's a disadvantage because prices have gone up for construction?
That is the finding we're proposing for you, and it's up to the city council to decide whether that's sufficient finding.
Yeah, I would urge my colleagues...
We serve at the pleasure of the city council.
Thank you. I would urge my colleagues that, you know, we should hold this project to the same standards that we hold every single person, including our mom and pop and our single-family residents who come in for variances. And this is the first time I heard that an increase in cost, which would put you at an inequitable level with other projects, is a ground for granting a variance. And that's just one. There's another finding, too. That there are exceptional circumstances or conditions applicable to the property involved, or to the intended use or development, that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone or neighborhood. This is a flat, very well-accessible piece of land. What, why are we giving them a break?
A split-zone property by its very definition automatically is at a, has an exceptional set of circumstances.
But we're giving them the zone change at the same breath. So how can, how can we do it both ways? It's not fair because your zone is split. Motion 1B is, let's give them that zone change. So this doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't sound fair to me. You want to talk about equity. It sounds like we're really bending over backwards for Carmel. Don't worry, it's still a slam dunk, guys. I want you to know, I'm just, just for the record. Brittany, are you getting all this down? Okay. I don't see that. I don't see that at all. And who writes these findings, anyway? Is this, I mean, Gillian Van Muyten came by and said, "Oh, we figured it out now." I guess Wolfgang Kraus sent a letter out that said, "How can you guys do this?" Wolfgang Kraus, our esteemed former planner with 30-plus years, we run the tape, thank you for your efforts. Wolfgang says, "How can you do this? It's unfair to give them the right to build above-ground on a pedestal when all the other properties and projects that we've done in the last few months, the ink isn't even dry on the mayor's signature on these, and we're saying, 'Okay, you're different, you're special, here you go.'" I have a problem with that. Is there an answer to that, or what? And why are you writing it for these folks, anyway? This is, you know, whose side are you on? You should be neutral.
Do you want us to actually provide answers to the questions, sir?
You're interrupting me now. You're throwing me off.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Why is that happening? I mean, I expect my staff to at least be very neutral in this, not to figure out a way to bend over backwards on these extremely generous findings for variance that is saving the developer. I would guesstimate, there's what, 500 parking spaces at least, 600, maybe 700, at the tune of, you know, an underground parking spot is 20, 30,000? I mean, this is in the millions of dollars we're saving this developer, and these findings are an extreme reach to grant the variance. Now I can have those answers. Thank you.
Okay, sure, Mr. Nigarian. I don't draft the findings. The planning department is, has the facts. They are most familiar with the case and looking at that, that that's what they're trained to do, is to examine these. What the legal staff does is when those findings come in, they come in for our review, and we approve them as deformed. It often happens, we do receive comment letters on many of our projects, and we take that very seriously. If there is a concept that isn't well-developed within the findings that have been written, we want to take that into consideration. If it's a valid comment and there are no facts to support it, then we need to respond accordingly. In this particular instance, we received that comment, we took it very seriously, we contacted, the planning department contacted us, and in consultation with the legal department, we asked some very tough questions. And based on those tough questions, the planning department further developed these findings, and that's what you have in front of you in the revised motion. But yes, we agree that our role here is to stay neutral and to ensure that the motions and the resolutions that come in front of our department for review and consideration prior to being submitted to you meet the legal test. And in some instances, the facts are strong, and in some instances, they're not quite as strong. But if there are supportive facts, we will indicate to the planning department that we believe that the facts that have been presented, the concepts that have been presented, are such that they are legal and can support the finding. And so that's the general answer to your question. We don't draft them, we review them.
Make no mistake about it, Mrs. Nigarian...
You guys are ganging up on me.
Well, I just want to address the comment that we, the city attorney's office is not an advocate for this project. We lose no sleep whether this project gets approved or denied. You pay your professional staff to have an opinion on these projects. When they have an opinion, they want to, they recommend the project based on their understanding of the code. It's our job to make sure that they, the recommendations that they're making have legal support, and we believe they do in this case.
And those opinions are predicated on the policy that's been established by the city council. The prevailing policy at this point in time is the DSP. This project, we believe, in our professional opinion, is consistent with the DSP. And so the notion of having staff to counter-research or poke holes in the recommendation, I think I understand the point, but I think the bigger solution for that which you seek rests there at the dais, to the extent that among your colleagues, you are able to lead and convince them that the existing DSP is not what you intend, and not your vision, and that that vision can prevail over what they currently hold. We will serve, as the city attorney says, we will serve the pleasure of the council, but ultimately, it is the council.
In terms of drafting the decisions, the findings that we do, let me just say, as the director of the Community Development Department and the person who gives direction to the staff in the Planning Division, my job is to look at the spirit, the intent, and the overall direction of the Downtown Specific Plan and the zoning code. In deference to my esteemed colleague from the Planning Division who wrote that comment, I have never subscribed, and I have never hidden the fact that I do not subscribe to strict reconstructionist direction of making a checklist of what goes to the zoning code and what doesn't. The zoning code is a tool to implement the direction that the city council gives us to implement. And from time to time, there are variations in interpretation, and we do those always in consultation with legal staff to see if we are still within the spirit of the law. And we take their direction very serious.
Mr. Nigarian, you've been going...
Well, I asked you guys if you wanted...
We've been going on over half an hour now. We're going to start city council at 6:00. And we haven't even been able to close the public hearing yet.
I have no objection to continuing this, if you would request. But I demand to be heard, Mr. Weaver.
I know, you could have spent all day talking with staff on these issues, but you're airing everything here and holding all the rest of us up.
These are issues that the public need to hear, Mr. Weaver.
Well, I don't necessarily agree with what you're trying to do here. You're against the project. Why don't you just vote no?
It's more than just voting no. It's a matter of raising the issues for the public to hear.
Well, sum it up. I'm not going to sit here at 7, 8:00 tonight, listening to you tear apart the Downtown Specific Plan and the zoning code, and every other thing in the city that you don't like. It's not fair to any of us.
You think I'm doing that well? Am I tearing it up?
Yes, I'm watching over half an hour, over half an hour. We're starting at 6:00.
Listen, I'm not reading Dr. Seuss here, okay? This is, these are serious questions that I have, that we as a council have either skirted or have not come to a conclusion.
Well, then, let's put it on council agenda a separate time and discuss every one of your issues. But on this project here tonight, to tear apart everything and try to get us to answer all your questions, no. Let's put it on the agenda.
I got all this on Friday, Mr. Weaver.
So did I.
And I think we're all at a disadvantage.
You don't know how many projects, well, you do know. Over the years you've been on this council, how many times we have got overloaded with stuff on a Friday, and we vote on Tuesday.
That's why we need staff, Mr. Weaver.
And I spend Fridays, and I spend Mondays talking with staff to get answers to my questions.
I understand.
And Tuesday mornings.
I understand.
So can you wrap it up so we can close the public hearing and hear what anybody else thinks?
I feel like Mr. Mohell now. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Weaver. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Weaver.
Okay, I'm closing the public hearing. Okay.
I hate to cut you off, Mr. Najarian. I hate to cut you off. Well, let me start by talking about why a slam dunk, why a slam dunk. It's a slam dunk because we worked on this DSP, this downtown strategic plan, for years and years and years. I don't even know how many years.
Ten.
Ten years, okay? So we worked on this downtown specific plan for 10 years. And what hasn't been mentioned, the, the, one of the speakers talked about the hillsides, downzoning hillsides. No, in addition to that, we downzoned all of our multifamily neighborhoods. I repeat, we downzoned all of our multifamily neighborhoods. And as a council, we agreed that downtown is where we wanted our housing. We have enough apartment buildings south of Colorado and north of Glen Oaks, on the west side and everywhere else, and we wanted downtown housing. And actually, Mr. Najarian, I think you voted in the affirmative on all of the downzoning as well as the downtown specific plan. Well, then the recession came, and so many of the projects that we were so excited about didn't materialize. So for a number of years, we'd have absolutely no forward movement on our strategic plan and very little housing being built. Now fortunately, we have a number of projects that are coming online. We are all set, the economy is starting to come back, downtown Brand and some of the surrounding neighborhoods, you can begin to sense there's more restaurants coming in, there's more, more activity, including more activity at night, and there'll certainly be much more activity when these units come online, which by the way, are gonna take a number of years before they do. All 5,000 residents or however many are there, they're not all gonna show up on, on a particular month and, and get rolling. So overall, I'm very happy that this company has agreed to spend, yeah, I'm sure it's 100 million and might be more. They have an opportunity to build throughout North America, and they've chosen Glendale, so I'm very happy that, that they've chosen to do this. And overall, I think the downtown housing concept that we came up with years ago, and we're not the only city in this country that's moving in that direction, I'm very happy that it's finally coming to, to fruition. Now, in terms of the project itself, I like the traffic entry and exit points, they make sense, one off of Central and the other off of the side streets. The Site A project, or the Site A parcel, let's call it, west of Central, I think is excellent. The north-south Paseo and that green belt, the green belt itself, as it was mentioned, would be 50-foot wide, so that is, that is huge. Expanding Doran Gardens by 70%, I think not just the adjoining condominiums are gonna use that park, but the entire neighborhood is gonna use that park. It's gonna be a good-sized, a good-sized park. And the green space on the west side of the building, I think, is a very good idea. I'm very happy that the tenant relocation is going, is moving forward, the financial assistance does exceed the requirements. And I like the idea that they actually have given some of the tenants more, more time. I'm pleased with three zip cars in the law, in the larger building, and two zip cars on Site B, the smaller building, as well as 70, 79 long-term parking spots for bikes. I think they're definitely gonna be used. Then, when the EIR was, was mentioned, once again, as we all know, apartments generate less trips and commercial, make no mistakes about it, this would be a zone for commercial buildings. So I think we're in good shape there. I like the idea of the parking structure. There's gonna be less during the construction, there's gonna be less digging, more impact on Doran Gardens and the surrounding neighborhood. The structure itself is, is surrounded by, by housing, so you're not gonna see it. I think that's a very good, a very good idea. And in terms of the east-west connection, I just don't think bicycles and alleys are a good idea. I think you have Doran and Pioneer, and they are good, good streets to, to use in terms of either pedestrian or, or bicycle use. So all in all, I'm very happy that this has come to fruition. It's been a long, it's been a long high haul, particularly different and more difficult because of the different zonings. However, the parcels were owned by one property owner, and they've owned those parcels for generations, let's say, and I'm glad they finally decided to sell. And I think they picked the, the right developers, and this is the right project for the site.
Mr. Sananian, do you want to...
Sure. I, you know, I walked into the DSP, I wasn't one of the council members who worked on the development of the downtown specific plan, but I embraced it, and I still embrace it because it coincides with my vision of what downtown Glendale should look like, what it should represent, what kind of a lifestyle change it should bring into the lives of not only people who live in downtown, but people living in the bedroom section, community section of Glendale. I think this project goes a long way towards the realization of the downtown specific plan. I think it does, it has all the components that we were looking for in the DSP. Notice I'm saying "we," although I didn't draft it. One of the concerns I had, initial concerns, was the parking. How was, how was the, the traffic? How was that going to impact the neighborhood? Would it be fair to the residents who live there with their lifestyle all of a sudden change towards the worse? But the, the impact is minimal. It's minimal, it's something like 33-car, you know, trips per peak period, which I think is truly minimal. And taking into consideration the fact, again, that residential areas have less traffic than, than commercial, I think that says it all. In terms of the underground versus above-the-ground parking and the fairness, you know, whether that's equitable or not, I, I wish that the open, the public hearing hadn't been closed because I'd like to know whether the other projects that Councilman Najarian listed had actually requested over-ground parking and were turned down. If that had been the case, I don't know, maybe there's something there that needs to be discussed. The impact that the increase of population, which obviously will result from not only this project but all the other projects in the area. Now, this issue I'm, I'm still not understanding because apparently we lost about 10,000 residents in the 10-year, 10-year period, from the 2000 census to the 2010 census. So in reality, we're only regaining the residents back. I mean, there's no indication that we've tipped over that 10,000 residents that we had already lost anyway. And I understand with the, with the, with the economic downturn, we probably cut some police officers' positions, and, but that's not something we can't recreate. I, I, I hope, I assume that economically will be more viable and we'll be doing better, and the services that we provide to the cities, this city's residents will reflect that. I mean, we will make sure that those services do not suffer as a result of any increase in population. So with that in mind, I support the project and intend to vote for it.
Thank you. Mr. Friedman?
Ready to vote.
Last comment?
Last comment?
No question, just comment. I don't know if you have a name for this project, but I'm gonna call it King Kong because it's way too big and it's got its arms around the throat of the city of Glendale as residents enter and exit the city. It's too big, we're affording the project owners too much in terms of above-ground parking, and the impacts raised in the EIR are significant, are not mitigable, and should be voted down. Thank you, Mr. Manchin.
Actually, I do have one comment.
Okay.
I just think it's ironic to say it's too big when it's gonna be, I think, the smallest building on the block. You know, it's got the 18-story building next door, how big is, how big are the two apartment towers? Oh, they're 18 and 18, and it's got the, the office building is 25 stories, and this is a six-story building, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Just a quick comment, so that Mr. Najarian doesn't feel like he's constantly ganged up upon. I, I do agree with him that these packets are quite massive, they're information-intensive. It would be, I think, very nice and the city would be well-served if all of us are provided with the packets like a week in advance as opposed to three days before the hearing. Because we are at a disadvantage, that's true. We don't, we, we don't do this as experts full-time and take some time to go through this and actually understand a lot of it, at least for me it does.
What we can do is work with CDD to find out, and it basically is, I think, just scheduling the hearings one week back so developers would have, experience a small delay. But we, I'm sure that's something we can solve.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll make it brief on my part. I have an advantage over all of you. I've worked with environmental documents for 30 years. First environmental document I looked at was 1970, it was 15 pages long, I think. That included the appendix and photographs. That was 1970. Well, let's take the garage first. Go down to the Americana. The public parking is above-ground, six-story, six-story level, and it's fronted by apartments and retail stores. So putting it into a building, it's cheaper to go up than it is to go down, I believe. So it makes all sense, and if you're young or old and you're living in there, being able to park on the same level you are and walk into your apartment makes a whole lot of sense to me. As far as the three brick buildings, I think I've had, over the years, doctors in every one of those buildings. All three, I've been told, are littered with asbestos and totally unusable and have to be torn down anyhow. So that makes sense. I think the project's been well-thought-out. Everything has been thought about that I can think of. Didn't leave me with hardly anything to ask questions on. Only thing I could say, and I've said it to every developer, you know, this is a land of redugos, and I'd allow you to see Spanish architecture, closer you're gonna get to see Spanish architectures go to Pasadena. This modernistic style of architecture is starting to grow on me because that's what you see in virtually every city that's coming in. So I have no problem with it, I think it's articulated well, and I think it'll be done quite well. So I'm all for it. So with that, would somebody like to move 1A, B, C, D, H, and I?
I would request separate consideration, separate voting on each item.
Is there a motion on 1A?
I can do that. Well, let me say, first of all, I don't really think you have an advantage over any of us in terms of understanding and analyzing EIRs. Anyone can, can do that with a reasonable...
Well, I just meant, I know where to look within a thick environmental document for the conclusions, the recommendations stuff.
It's not that difficult to understand. Okay, I'll move...
1A?
I'll break them up. Yeah, I'll move 1A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman...
Yes.
Najarian, Quintero...
Yes.
Sananian...
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi.
I'll move 1B.
B and C are okay, I can...
All right, I'll move...
B and C.
B and C.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman, Najarian...
No.
Quintero...
Yes.
Sananian...
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. How about 1D?
I'll move 1D.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman...
Yes.
Najarian, Quintero...
Yes.
Sananian...
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi.
I'll introduce the ordinance at 1E.
Okay.
Then I'll introduce the ordinance at 1F.
Okay.
I'll introduce the ordinance at 1G.
Thank you. And is there a motion on 1H?
H and I are substitute motions.
Excuse me?
H and I are substitute motions.
Revised.
Revised.
Oh, sorry.
All right, I will move together.
We don't, we don't, do we need to pass those or not?
Yeah, we need to do it.
Yeah, you do. I'm, we, they've been revised based on the discussion.
Oh, okay.
All right, I will move the substitute or revised motion at 1H and 1I.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Najarian, I'm sorry, councilmembers Friedman...
Yes.
Najarian...
No.
Quintero...
Yes.
Sananian...
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Okay, we got through, no, 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 we have two yet, and we're still gonna start at 6 o'clock. Okay. Please read 2 into the record.
At item 2 is Director of Public Works regarding conditional vacation of the first alley west of Central Avenue, Doran Street to Pioneer Drive, and the easterly portion of the first alley north of Doran Street, west of Central Avenue, in connection with the above-proposed Carmel Partners' five-story North Central Avenue Apartments Project, vacation case number 173V. At 2A is a resolution ordering the vacation, and at 2B is resolution adopting Plan Number 12-232.
Yeah, I've been told there's a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing again for this one. Mr. Chala?
Yes, sir, as indicated previously, this is the, the vacation of the alleys contained within the project site. If you have any specific questions, Mr. Galanian and Mr. Fortney can answer those.
I have no cards. Is there any questions? Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing.
Okay, let me make the comment that these alleys are owned by the property owners, and there were easements across the private property. I'll move 2A and B.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman...
Yes.
Najarian...
No.
Quintero...
Yes.
Sananian...
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Is there a motion adjourned for the city council?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we stand adjourned at 20 minutes to 6, and we'll commence the council meeting at 6, since we have a special guest coming.